Okay, let's call it order the regular business meeting in the Board of Education from Monday, March 18th. It's nice to see you're still that you're agreeing on today.
I just said to Lisa, I'm a hundred percent Irish, shaking her this much.
There you go. Um, if I ask everybody to stand, please recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am the United States of America and consider the republic of which stands only nation under God and indivisible, with the greatness of its own.
All right. Uh, roll call, please?
Jim Batson.
Here.
Pat Rudy.
Here.
Lisa Hassel.
Here.
Kevin Buber.
Here.
Scott Luce. Karen Lunsford.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
All right, so we know Scott Luce asked for the record. Um, our agenda this evening, we'll open it up for public comment. Anybody who would like to speak, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Um, we've got some student recognition today.
Right, no student recognition right now this month.
I was gonna say, if it is, it's small. Um, we have updates from our school, Student School Board Representatives, a superintendent's report, we'll approve the consent vote agenda, which we reviewed last week, and then updates from facilities and finance. Who's gonna do that for Scott? Okay, that would be me.
Yes, Pat.
Yeah.
I think Pat ought to do that, what are you guys thinking?
Okay. Uh, and then we'll have updates from program and personnel, um, no property sale. Okay? Uh, I A S B? Yeah. Okay. And then we will have an exec- uh, executive session this evening on collective negotiating matters filed out CS 120 slash 2 C 2. Uh, other than to return to open session, we will not be taking any action after that. And I think that's it. All right? So, would anybody from the public like to speak tonight? Nope? Okay. Um, then we'll go right to our student, uh, or, uh, yeah, Student School Board updates. Who would like to start?
Next week.
Next week.
Yeah. All right, so we're gonna start off with clubs and activities. So, the debate team had two weeks of state tournaments to conclude a successful season. Two weeks ago, the Public Forum and Lincoln Douglas teams competed at Ponant High School for the novice and junior varsity state tournament. Lincoln Douglas researched whether the illegal use of drugs ought to be treated as a matter of public health or criminal justice, and Public Forum researched whether the U.S. should promote the development of market rate housing. As the newer debaters competed in their rounds, some varsity members helped out by judging other novice teams. We want to give a shout out to the three Libertyville debaters who placed for their performance in speaking, juniors Albert Sterner, Jessica Lee, and Catherine Corliss. Last weekend, the debate team also competed in the annual IHSA State Debate Tournament down at Illinois State University. The two teams prepared extensively for the two days of debating. Um, the de- the debaters had an incredible time debating students from schools all across Illinois, discussing the merits and drawbacks of both sides and exchanging a multitude of ideas. The Moll United Nations Club held their annual student run conference at school three weeks ago, and it was a huge success. First-year members and returning members alike got the chance to practice their skills in a simulation of the 1956 cabinet to the Egyptian President Nasser, dealing with the Suez Crisis and British imperialism. Everyone had a fun experience, and overall, the club has grown a lot over the course of the year. The Libertyville High School Science Olympia Team had an outstanding performance two weeks ago at the College of Lake County Regional Tournament. They secured fourth place overall, winning a bid to the state competition held at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. Of the 23 events, every event except one placed in the top 10, with special congratulations going out to Deb Maitra and Emma Muscato for placing first in forensics. The team is now hard at work studying fossils, performing chemistry experiments, building thermal boxes, and more, in preparation for the state tournament. The Libertyville High School Math Team had a great opportunity to compete at the NSML Conference. It was a tough meet, serving us great practice for the road ahead to the upcoming ICTM State Math Competition, which the math team is incredibly excited for.
Um, going off of that, LHS also hosted a Girls in STEAM Day for girls who are interested in the fields of chemistry, computer science, art technology, business, and politics. Female presenters from each of the fields spoke to the group of middle school and high school girls who attended. The goal of the event was to educate and encourage women to enter fields in which they have been historically underrepresented. The event was put on by the Advocats Club, which focuses on gender equality and women's issues. The German classes have also performed exceptionally well on the National German Exam, receiving a number of honors, with one student even being considered for a major scholarship opportunity to go to Germany. We also want to congratulate all the students who have been named to the National Honor Society for Students of German. A couple of weeks ago, MedCats, Human Anatomy classes, and Genetic Students got to witness an open heart surgery at the Advocate Condo Medical Center. It was a great opportunity for students interested in the medical field, and it was a great chance for them to see how the stuff that they were learning about in class applies to the real world. They got the chance to view and interact with the surgical team as they performed five bypasses on a person's heart. Um, to move on to a few school ongoings, um, the annual World Language Week just finished last week and was a widely attended event as usual. Throughout the week, students found ways to celebrate the different parts of the world where the languages they study are spoken. Dancers from Brazil performed for two days, there was a week-long global food sale outside of the cafeteria, and students worked on fun cultural projects in class. Some student favorites from the week included the chero sales and the piñatas made in the Spanish classes. The school's annual Writers Week kicked off today. Throughout the week, English classes will go to the auditorium to hear other students, as well as adult, present their writing. This year's presenters include Dr. Van Wilt, who runs a record label and produces music, and Tim Toaster Henderson, a Chicago-based poet, among many others. One of the students' favorite acts during the week will be the Write Club, where teachers and students compete against one another in a writing style of debate. The topics for the debates can range from math versus music to bling versus swag. We help, we also have over 25 students who offered to present their own pieces of writing throughout the week, and we cannot wait to hear all of them. We are also very thankful to all of the teachers and administrators who helped to make this week possible, and we look forward to the rest of the week.
Um, LHS hosted free heart screenings for students on Wednesday. The screening is done with the Max Shewitz Foundation, which has a dual mission of preventing sudden cardiac arrest in teens, as well as supporting wildlife conservation. The test measures the electric, the electrical activity in the heart and is used to detect hidden cardiac issues. An echocardiogram test has also recently been added with the help from the school, where students can take another test of an anomaly was found in the first. The students are very grateful for the opportunity to get screened and are thankful to the Max Shewitz Foundation for their continued mission. We also want to put in a word of thanks to all those who volunteered to help the event run smoothly. The main gym is currently closed until further notice due to paint chips, due to paint chips containing lead falling from the ceiling. As this is obviously an issue of grave concern, the student body is extremely thankful for the administration's swift action and look forward to getting it reopened. In the meantime, gym classes have begun to go bowling at Fairhaven Lands in place of activities in the main gym. Without knowing how long the repair process may take, however, a number of people in various departments are concerned about where they may hold events that otherwise would have occurred in the gym. The Art Department, for example, must now consider alternative options for where their annual spring art show will be, and the Badminton Team is temporarily traveling to Vernon Hills in order to use the facilities. We are all hopeful that the diligent repair team will be able to bring things back to normal as safely as possible, and we are thankful for those aiding in the transitions. Two weeks ago, LHS celebrated the successes of our athletes in the Winter Athletic Programs at the Winter Sports Awards Night. Athletes were celebrated for strong conference and state performances while also maintaining strong grades, which is difficult to juggle with the exten- with the extensive time commitments of sports. It was a great way to celebrate the end of the season. Finally, we'd like to end with a special congratulations to the, um, Special Olympics Basketball Team who won the state championship, and, uh, we look forward to hosting the state march for them on Friday.
All right, so congratulations to this month's Cougar Class Act recipients, Paula Ebbdaurzak, Rebecca Agnew, Darjika Asher, Farnoosh Ganjapur, Avery Hassel, Elise Garcia, Tyler Clean, Hannah Rabbinowitz, Nevita Tito-Centolgmar, Tyler Tran, Natalia Aloa, and Rachel Wright. So, this past Thursday, Vernon Hills celebrated Pie Day, marked by the date 3/14. The Math Department organized many different activities for the students to partake in throughout the day. Students were able to buy the Malati's Deep Dish Pizza for lunch, but the most memorable part of the day were the donations going towards Vernon Hills Sister School. Students donated jars with math teacher's faces on them, and whichever jar raised the most money would result in a pie in that teacher's face. Mr. Healy's students raised eighty-two dollars to see him get a pie to the face on Friday. Uh, on March 2nd, Vernon Hills hosted Solon Ensemble, where fine art students from Vernon Hills and Libertyville prepared pieces to perform for judges. Uh, students were placed into certain divisions based on their point scores received. There are five divisions, Division One being the best, and every year, many Vernon Hills students placed into this division. So, this past Friday, Dr. G shared a video to the students of Vernon Hills outlining the construction changes that will be made for the school next year. He touched on the additions that would be made to the school, including a new classroom wing, additions to the cafeteria, and a new gym. So, these additions are meant to address the quickly growing population of Vernon Hills, which is expected to reach eighteen-hundred students in the next 10 years. Students are excited for the new expansions to the school, especially some of the new food varieties that will be introduced in the cafeteria. Uh, so this past Saturday, Vernon Hills had its annual Top Cougar. Senior boys Joey Levitan, Noah Proft, Micah Kim, Ethan Schuster, Jack Farron, Brett Sweeney, Maxu, and David Lechner all competed to be named this, this year's 2019 Top Cougar. The boys sang and performed stand-up for the audience during the talent portion, showed off their tuxedos during the fashion portion, and those that moved on answered questions during the interview portion. Senior Micah Kim was named this year's Top Cougar for his hilarious ASMR performance and great interview portion. Uh, congratulations to the girls indoor track and field for winning the CSL Championships. And then, this past Saturday, Vernon Hills held College Palooza for junior families from both Vernon Hills and Libertyville to come and learn more about the college application and selection process. There were multiple different sessions for students to attend, uh, to learn about the different parts of the college process. So, students were given information about how to write their college essays, how to apply to highly selective schools, and the process behind admissions for public universities. Guest speakers from Xavier University, University of Michigan, and University of Notre Dame came to provide the students with key information they would need for their applications. Vernon Hills' keynote speaker was Rob Franek, the editor-in-chief of the Princeton Review, which is a large college admissions service company that creates hundreds of test review books and other college-related preparation services. Uh, on March 8th, Vernon Hills had an open mic night at Barbara's Books, where students could come up and read, read poems, sing, and rap, so students could sign up beforehand or during the event to go up and perform for the audience. Some students that participated in open mic night were Sadie Schultz, Brett Sweeney, Aiden Isaacson, Ethan Schuster, and Tessa Krusick. Uh, on March 1st, fifty-five students from Dance 2 and 3 and the Orcasus Dance Company had the opportunity to participate in a workshop with the Innisight Chicago Dance Company. Students were able to experience a master class in jazz technique and learn repertory along, alongside dance professionals. After students watched a special performance, and they were also able to ask questions of the dancers. And then, congratulations to the Science Team for taking first place in the Division 1500 Suctional Aces at Vernon Hills High School.
A few weeks ago, the VHHS Math Team finished second at the Regional Championship, with numerous teams placing in the top four and many students winning individual awards. The Math Team qualified for the state finals, which will be held in May. Congrats to these students and their staff coaches. Um, as already mentioned, congrats to the D-128 Storm Unified Basketball Team. This was their first basketball championship, and we're so happy for the athletes who put in so much work to get to this point. On Saturday, March 2nd, CAB held their 19th Annual Winter Fundraiser, which included a wine pool, raffle, silent auction, and live auction. Over 200 people attended the event, and CAB was able to raise over $25,000 for student athletes and their sports teams. Speaking on behalf of CAB, Tonya Rebeck said they were all thrilled with the results and are already planning next year's 20th Annual Fundraising Blowout. Sounds like the event was certainly a success. We'd like to recognize one of our students, senior Katie Brennan, who greatly embodies our daring mission and is seeing it pay off in big ways. As part of her sophomore year activism fair project, Katie wrote poems about the rape crisis in India and sent them to the organization's safety. Katie later discovered that safety had posted her poems, and she was eventually offered an internship with the organization. She took initiative after seeing a book display one day and was instrumental in starting a campaign at safety about empowering children through literature. Katie has also attended conferences and meetings about disability awareness and activism, women's rights, environmentalism, and other subjects. She serves as a member and leader for many clubs here at VHHS and has made numerous connections outside of school as well. Katie's activism and accomplishments have helped her to discover her goals and interests for the future, and she was named a 2019 Koch Scholar. Overall, Katie's drive and passion has helped her to be an example of what the daring mission truly means and how getting involved can truly pay off. Congratulations to Jack Mulcrum, who was named to the 2018-2019 Daily Herald Leadership Team. Jack was chosen for his initiative, hard work, and demonstrated desire to make a difference. For the last two years, Jack and his brother have been working on an independent environmental research project, seeking to make an energy farm with wind turbines. Jack said he was inspired by a need to preserve natural resources, educate others, and propose ways for his community to utilize renewable energy sources in order to power school activities. Congratulations to Jack on this amazing recognition, and congratulations also to Hannah Ray, who was named an honorable mention for the leadership team. Towards the end of February, VHHS held its first Dare to Empower Lunch and Learn. The Lunch and Learn was for female identifying students and was focused on how to empower other females. One of the main topics discussed was how females are more likely than males to not speak up in class or meetings, even if they know the answer or have an opinion to share. Talking to Elizabeth Ochoa, a senior who attended the lunch, she said a big focus was that instead of tearing each other down to get to the top, females need to encourage each other, so they don't give other people the idea that it's okay to tear females down. The lunch encouraged attendees to use the statements "I have seen" or "I have experienced" to make it more personal and less general. Elizabeth said she enjoyed the experience and thought it was really good that our school did this. There will be a second meeting focused on females empowering themselves. Earlier this month, our International Languages Department celebrated International Languages Week with days of cultural exploration and celebration. One day, each language class gathered in the studio theater to watch a performance by a group of Scottish dancers and a bagpipe player. There was even an interactive portion of the performance, where some of the dancers led students in learning one of the traditional Scottish dances. Later in the week, a day was dedicated to a food fair, where students brought in traditional foods of their own personal culture or the culture of the language they study. It was an excellent opportunity to try delicious new foods and learn about and gain an appreciation for other cultures. The theme of the week was learn a language and level up, and students certainly experienced how studying other languages and cultures can enhance their interactions in life. For the last VH Give of the school year, the focus was on spreading positivity through the school. Passing periods were extended to be six minutes each, and in between each class, an activity was announced for students to participate in. A few of these activities included making paper airplanes with positive messages written inside and flying them through the hallways for other people to pick up, seeing how many high-fives you could get on your way to your next class, sending texts of gratitude, playing fun music, and stepping on bubble wrap. It was an excellent fold day experience to cap off VH Give for this year. And finally, with spring break rapidly approaching, students and staff are looking forward to a week off from school. Many people are going on vacation, and we have a few school trips to look forward to. Art is taking a trip to Japan, band is traveling to Spain, and softball is heading once again to Alabama. We look forward to hearing all about these trips when we come back from break.
All right, great job, you guys. Lots going on. Um, okay, just one comment that I'll make, and I know you're gonna cover this in more detail, but I honestly just want to take this opportunity, um, to thanks, thank most of the people, especially along this side of the wall. Last, last week, we approved, um, what, twenty-three million dollars in construction contracts for the thirty million dollars of construction that we're doing on Vernon Hills and Libertyville campuses. Um, that was the culmination of probably five-plus years of work, and, uh, especially in the last three or four months, I want to recognize Mark Hootman, Dan Stanley, Brian Kelly, Jeff Masters, and, um, Mike Henderson, uh, who really did a heroic job to go through all of the bids, um, and put it all together, uh, keeping the project on track, because we wanted to keep this moving pretty quickly, so we could start construction this, uh, this spring and summer. And so, I really just want to publicly say thanks to all you guys for your hard work. Um, it was a tremendous amount of work in addition to the normal things that they have to do, and, uh, so we're grateful for your organization. Jeff and company were grateful for all the technical skills that you guys have brought to the picture to pull all that together. The goodness is, all the bids came in favorable, all right? So, we're excited about that, and again, most excited about, you know, soon to get shovels in the ground and, and get going, okay? So, um, great start, and we're looking to, forward to an exciting summer or two. Okay? All right, um, with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Lee for some more good news and some other updates.
Great job for the students again, and their reports are amazing every month, and thank you. And I, I do want to remind the public again that, uh, typically, Dr. Rudy and I and the two building principals, Dr. Gilliam and Dr. Kalintas, meet with, uh, six board reps once a month before our committee meetings, and that allows us to stay in, in touch with them, and, and we really appreciate them making that time to meet with us. It's a good time, so thank you for everything that you do. And tonight, we'd like to welcome Ray Alvin, and Ray is here for, uh, Tom Kalintas, and I'm always glad to have Ray here. Ray's the associate principal, uh, number two at LHS, so Ray, thanks for coming tonight. Okay, uh, some additional good news. Uh, I want to give one more shout-out to the Unified Basketball Team. Uh, D-128 Unified Basketball Team won the state championship on March 16th in Peoria. Team members are Joseph Mahler, Joey Reyes, Mitch Newman, Nathan Ferrara, John Ford, Mason Reyes, Anna Scholler, Sophie Schofield, and Alexa Donato. The team is coached by Andy Compton, Colin Mason, and Corey Atwell. We couldn't be more proud of them, and Bryant, I am guessing we are going to have them as our guests in April, so we'll get to meet them firsthand and celebrate their success. Uh, the students touched on, uh, the seniors at VHHS, and I just, I, uh, want to make sure that we got the LHS students as well, but Molly Grattan at LHS was named to the 2018-19 Daily Herald Leadership Team, um, and, uh, senior Marissa Mazetta was named an honorable mention, so those are terrific honors, and to have that many kids from our district is phenomenal. The following LHS students were named March True Wildcats, Karen Tarman, Kelsey Mizell, Grace Rossetti, John Thomas, Rachel Bertard, Colin Welch, Brian Stacy, Jose Mendoza Silbera, and Madeline Weaver. The LHS Academic Decathlon Team, coached by Mark Busing, placed ninth at state competition held March 9th at Northeastern Illinois University. Team members are Conrad Stepanowski, Constance Zantz, Audrey Chung, Ethan Landry, Savannah Stevens, Thomas Hubbard, and Bennett Shuniman. VHHS students Taylor Wilkerson and Caleb Smith were named the first-ever VHHS Prevention and Wellness Program's Students of the Month, and will enjoy the best parking spots on campus. Boy, that's a pretty good deal, Dr. Gilliam.
Not for long, because visitors love them, already to get killed.
Yeah, that's true. So, I, I'll have to enjoy that, like, at the end of school, right?
Yeah, for a couple more weeks.
Yeah, congratulations to that. LHS teams competed in the local Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, FCC LA Competition, at Harper College on Friday, February 22nd. Freshman students Gretchen Wimmer and Devjani Maitra won outstanding for their categories of cookie decorating. The following students received gold and silver honors and will compete at state April 4th and 5th in Springfield. Jack Distinfield, Annalena Walquist, Clara Benavides, Shane Wimmer, Andrea Wells, Mackenzie Shutz, Clara Corkins, Natalie Brown, Caitlin Johnston, Madison Muirin, Kenzie Farrell, Annalise Bosler, and Spencer. For the LHS Math Team's eight-person team won its regional competition at Stevenson High School on February 23rd. As a result of winning its event, the team will compete at ICTM State Mathematical Contest at U of I in Champagne in May, and that means that both the teams, once again, will be representing District 128 Downstate. And finally, good news, VHHS Band Director Randy Sundell was inducted to the American Bandmasters Association on March 9th in Loveland, Colorado. Randy was nominated by retired LHS Band Director Don Shoup. In addition to the formal induction celebration, Randy also conducted the U.S. Air Force Band, which must have been amazing, because they're really good. So, congratulations to Mr. Sundell, and it's nice to see our staff do terrific things as well. Um, so, moving on to the superintendent's report tonight, then, we want to do a quick update, as we always do at committee meetings, but we also like to share that at board meetings, Mark, on the LHS pool and parking.
Okay, thank you, Prince. Things are moving along, the project with the pool. We've been, uh, completed masonry, uh, column enclosures on the south, uh, wall of the pool, uh, last week. They're working on the cavity installation, uh, insulation on the east wall of the pool, and the face brick has started on the east wall of the pool. We've been working on a entryway masonry, uh, between, uh, the west gym and the new pool, so that is in progress. Uh, they installed, um, they finished a steel work for the roof, so the roof deck, uh, is being worked on this week in that area. In the pool itself, they completed, uh, all the rebar work and poured just over half of the bleacher section, uh, so that was, uh, nice to see. Forms will come off soon, uh, and they're working on the rest of the steel for the, um, steel rebar for the east side of the bleachers, and we hope to pour that by the end of this week. And we started the layout for the tile installation in the, inside the pool, it's off the pool vessel, so we will start tile sometime this week.
And Mark, uh, as we look at parking outside around there, so what, what does that timeline look like at this point? This would be, uh, parking outside of the pool and the additional parking at the board work earlier in the year.
The site is all, um, been cut down to the height for the stone, so now it's a process of the weather and us, uh, getting the area to dry out, so we can put the stone down and get the basin, so we can get the curbs in, so that's gonna happen here this spring.
Very cool. Any questions? Great. Um, Pat mentioned earlier that, uh, we're very excited after a number of years of work on the, um, additions and renovations on both buildings. We had an extensive review of the bids at committee meeting, uh, and then reviewed one more time at a special board meeting, uh, last Monday, and, uh, as Pat indicated, the board voted to award the bids. We came in with that twenty-three million dollar package, about 1.8 million dollars under, uh, projected cost, which is great for the district. Uh, we talked about a number of things, but, um, we have both Jeff and Mike here tonight, and I think one of the questions the board asked that we wanted to talk about, uh, tonight a little bit, is that Gilbane and STR obviously are doing, uh, design and management work for us, um, and, uh, we asked them, the board asked them to talk a little bit about what they do for their design fees. So, uh, if you guys want to step up to the microphone and just, uh, you know, kind of follow up on the answer that, uh, you guys talked about at the meeting, let's speak good things for the public to know.
Certainly.
Thank you, Ryan.
Okay. Uh, again, I'm Mike Henderson, uh, principal with STR Bargains. Uh, I lead the design team, the architectural team, um, with the, with the entire project. Um, so, just so you understand, there's, um, there's an awful lot that goes on behind the scenes. A project like this involves, um, literally dozens of professionals, uh, from structural engineers, mechanical engineers, plumbing engineer, electrical engineers, fire protection engineers, uh, acoustical engineers, uh, civil engineers at stormwater. Uh, we also have team members that specialize specifically in the food service areas for the cafeteria, uh, as well as roofing, building envelope, and, and again, it takes, it really does take a, a full team of people to, to organize and to create the, a really great design and quality documents, um, so that, uh, the construction team can take those documents and build a building out of it. So, the project begins, as you know, like, it's taken years to get to, to, to this point. So, early in a project, um, we, we talk about the first part of design, uh, you literally design the building in words and numbers. You have to find out how big things are, what are the needs, uh, that, that term form follows function really is true. You have to define what it is you want to solve and before you ever get there, and that does take a great deal of time. Um, and, uh, we've had a, a great team, uh, teamwork with the, uh, the district in both, both schools, um, a lot of great input, um, back and forth, and it's, it's just really been a great process and a great project. Um, we're very proud of the work we do, and, um, and, uh, we really appreciate the opportunity to, to be your team, or be part of your team.
Great. Thank you, Mike. I'm Jeff Masters, I'm vice president with Gilbane Building Company. Really, our work, everybody understands, we do the construction part, but really, our work also began in conjunction with the design element, which basically started last summer. A lot of our pre-construction work is related to budgeting, estimating, uh, working throughout the schedule, and we also worked, spent a lot of time with, uh, the each school's staff on the phasing and logistics and how that was gonna be done, so that we could coordinate the construction without interfering with the operation of the school. And we've had great, uh, interaction with the team, and we're really excited about getting started, so, um, and that's, that, what I say, pre-construction is really the art of what we do, because you, you have to envision what doesn't exist yet, and work closely with the design team, so you can, A, meet your budget, you can get it done when you need it done, and we're gonna make sure that it gets done with the right quality and everything can be built without interfering with the school. So, um, and, you know, so we do estimating, we do scheduling, we do, uh, a really detailed review, one last check before we go out the bid of, are there any questions in the documents that may not be known yet, so we can identify them, get them answered before we get into construction, and where delays could mean money and time, and we get that information at STR, so we avoid a lot of the quest for information and change orders as we go on to try and keep the project on track and, and we're being as efficient as we can. Obviously, then, when we get into construction, you know, we've got our supervision, you know, we will have a superintendent at each site full-time. have a superintendent at each site full time, all the time, anytime there's work going on, we'll be there to make sure it's safe, we're not interfering with the school, and we're making sure that the quality and the schedule are being maintained. And then, you know, through punch list, turnover, and then we stay with the project and really until all the issues are resolved and you're happy with, with the projects.
Thanks, guys. And just so the community knows, both S T R and Gilbane worked with us for years on the new pool at L H S that we report out on every month. And again, we've had a great experience working with them and we're very excited to have the opportunity to work with them again. These guys have been in here, we couldn't even count the number of times you've been here meeting with our teams either at the buildings or district office, you know, over the past two years, three years, coming in and, and that personal touch and having the ability to work with you guys directly has been, I think we would all say has been very helpful for us. The last thing I'd like the community to know is both of these gentlemen and their companies have both been involved in value engineering, both of those projects. So we did a lot of value engineering on the swimming pool to get that in a manageable range, and we're going to have a terrific pool when we're done, but we're also going to have a pool that we can afford with the resources that we have. And they've also helped us value, value engineer the three projects over here and working at Libertyville and repurposing the old facility. And we appreciate that flexibility, it really underscores what you guys talk about in working with the customer within the resources tonight, so thank you very much. Any other questions for the guys while they're up on the mic from the board?
Just one other comment, I, and I feel bad about this, I neglected to thank John, you, Ray, you, and Tom and your leadership teams at the building level for all the hard work that you guys did for really pre-planning. You guys I think have so far done a great job of working collaboratively with us to not just get what you want, but to really kind of narrow that list down to what we really think we need. And those aren't always the same, so I just want to say thank you to you and all your leadership in doing that. You guys have done a great job of, you know, really putting together, I think, a, a plan to make sure we have really great facilities, but really focused on those things that we really need. So I want to say thanks to you guys as well. I apologize if I didn't mention that.
Again, thank you for coming tonight. I know we talked about this at the special board meeting and the committee meeting. And I think often the perception is that frankly, Mike with S T R just does some drawings and then Jeff with Gilbane just kind of puts a hard add-on when it's, construction's going on and walks around, so I think you remind all of us of the value added. And so thank you for coming tonight, much appreciated.
Do you want to be clear that they do draw stuff and do wear outfits? So I mean, that's part of, just a little bit.
That's number eleven on your job descriptions, other duties is assigned, right? Thanks, guys.
Something else we've gone right, because the pool didn't leak, so.
Yeah, there you go, on the task. That was the good news because we never, from the beginning, never had that luck with the old pool, right? Okay, guys, thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll be adding monthly updates again to the board agenda just to see where we're at as we move forward. Okay, next on the superintendent's report is L H S main gym lead paint remediation. We appreciate the students' update on that tonight. As the board knows from a previous update, that is categorized as an emergency repair. So there are actually two phases to that project, and one is the remediation and then we're required by law to have monitoring. So we have contracted with two groups, the first a remediation group that we've worked with and has a good reputation, and then a monitoring group that will meet the law and make sure everything is good moving forward. Like we did with the electrical problem we had at L H S before, the guys can talk a little bit about the work and we're hopeful it can be done by the end of spring break, so when we come back, you know, we'll be golden hopefully moving forward and everybody will be safe. But what we're going to do tonight is, just to formalize this, we're going to ask you to authorize us to expend up to fifty thousand dollars, which would be for both of those things. We think it will come in less, but just in case we run into a problem there, then, you know, we don't have to come back and do that again, and then we'll report out on the backside. But again, because it falls into an emergency repair, we're not required to go out and bid it because we have to have the work done and it has to be done immediately. So Dan, do you or Mark, do you want to?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're going to send around so you guys have it. And it more is less because we, it is an emergency and so there are, you know, the state laws fortunately flexible enough to recognize emergencies happen and you can't always go about things the normal way of business, you got to get things done. So they allow us flexibility in this, but particularly the reason why we have these is because we just so happened to have a board meeting today. So really, these are the two proposals that we have for this emergency work. So it's kind of interesting, the one pager that you're going to get, that is for the bulk of the work, that's for the contractor, our environmental, that we've worked before with other projects successfully. And so they gave us the proposal, so you can see thirty-two thousand for the base work, but based on, you know, some of the unknowns that we don't really know, maybe another eight thousand, so up to forty there. And then P S I is interesting because that work is about four grand for the oversight, but it's several pages because they're the monitoring. And so thankfully, one thing we did, I think soon, soon when I got here, we had a proposal from P S I to do similar oversight work, and we spent a significant amount of time negotiating legal terms. And that's always the tricky thing, right, when you get these proposals, that you got to have terms that, that are mutually agreeable, right? So thankfully, we already have general terms and conditions in place for P S I that we're able to carry forward, so that's why you'll see like a lot of writing and, and crossing out stuff on the general terms, like those are really the most important parts, I think, of, of a lot of contracts that we have. So we're very fortunate to have those in place. So really, these are the, these are the two agreements that we're running with to get them ready. We have, you know, posting requirements, everything, but in terms of the contracts and the proposals, this is really what we have, this is what, what we're moving on with that. Maybe I'll turn it to Mark.
Mark, do you want to talk about timeline a little bit?
So we, we met with our contractor that we've worked with before in the past with some of our asbestos baked projects and put together a scope of work, what needed to be done to address the peeling paint. So they will, our schedule should start tomorrow with startup of covering up and all the areas, bleachers, things like that, stuff on the walls. And then they will progressively work scraping off the paint, the loose, loose area, then prime the paint to match the paint back as, as best as possible in the area. And we expect to be, open the gym back up for April first, first day back of school.
April fourth.
If, if it had to happen again, we're, I mean, we lucked out having a week of spring break, right? So that, that really helps us, although there are athletics will be going on, you know, the spring and all of that, and it's always tough scheduling when the weather's in transition like it is right now with spring sports. But again, just appreciate everybody's work. I want to give a shout out to John and Vern Hills again because as we did when we had to do pool drains a few years ago, I mean, we just worked together very well as a team within the district and, you know, there was just no question that, you know, our two A Ds and John and Tom are going to work together on this. And so we really appreciate everybody's cooperation on this. The last thing I want to say on this is we really appreciate the trust of the students and the parents on this. We put the information out, you know, we did not get traffic of calls and emails and I, I think again, you know, we obviously get to be honest with the public and hopefully that engenders trust as we're working with people, but, you know, Brian did a great job of working with the team and putting information together during the day and putting that in the package so we could talk about how to communicate that, and they got all of that out and did a great job. So I, I want to thank our public for trusting us with the safety of their kids and our staff for also trusting us with their safety because they work in the buildings as well. So great job to everyone and hopefully we'll be done soon, okay? Any other questions on that? Okay. I would need a motion to authorize us to spend up to fifty thousand dollars on L H S main lead paint remediation. So moved?
Second.
Somebody has to make the motion though. I can't make the motion. Oh, you, oh, you moved, what I said, okay, got it.
Yeah, what he said.
Is there any discussions?
No.
Roll call please.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Essel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, next on the superintendent's agenda is our annual I H S A membership school renewals, and this is the high school association which covers all athletics and a number of competitive activities in the state. It is the only organization authorized by the legislature in Springfield and so, but we do need board motion to update our memberships. I do want to point out, Brian, you can correct me on this, I looked at this before the meeting tonight, but again, we are required, because I H S A is really healthy, we're not required to pay any membership dues, which is great for all the member schools in, in the state of Illinois.
Was that new this year or is that?
I haven't paid dues in quite a while.
I don't know why I didn't notice it. I thought we were state national.
No, it's separate.
Amazing.
Fortunately. It's separate.
Oh.
Okay.
I hate when they have them as they like that.
All right, so we just, we just need a motion.
Motion to renew our membership in I H S A.
I make a motion to renew our membership in the Illinois High School Association.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call please.
Rudy.
Aye.
Essel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, one last thing under other tonight that's just come up recently, but it's something that the L H S students and certainly Mr. Almond will be aware of. We've done a lot of work on the H V A C system at L H S over the past couple of years, still tweaking and fine tuning as, as again the folks at L H S know, but we also have cooling season, cooling season coming up pretty quickly where it will be much warmer in the building. So we still have a few things that we need to do there. So Mr. Stanley and I had a conversation today, we've got some work that, that needs to be done. Again, it's work that, and Dan will explain it, we don't have to bid out, but we want the board to be aware and we'd like to move forward because we can get some of the work done that needs to be done over spring break again before it gets all warm up. So Dan, with that said, I'll turn it over to you.
Dr. Lee mentioned the H vac, something that we're spending a lot of attention on both in terms of money, but also in terms of time, we're still experiencing definitely some issues with our system there. And so as Train has had a chance to really sit down and kind of figure out what's happening, a different team, the Train, the implementation team that sets up our B A S that we did last year, and now we have a service support team essentially, and it's a different team that's helping us figure out what's happening. And lo and behold, there is issues with the controls that we have set up that Train is responsible for fixing and they're working on that. But then we also have mechanical issues that we have to take care of, that's our responsibility. Meaning they could have a control that works perfectly fine that says turn this valve on, and it works perfectly fine, but the valve is literally broken and it, so it won't turn on. That's the kind of thing we're talking about. So Train was able to put together a list of various H vac parts to replace throughout the building. And so that is the list, that is the list that we really have through them, and so that total cost at this point is about seventy-five thousand dollars to do that, to, to do the parts. I'll let him, I'll let Mark talk a little bit more about kind of the process and the timing, but in terms of this contract, we've been in touch with, with Lynn and also with the, the Train and even the, the U S Communities contract that this is under, so this is under a national purchase contract, that this is already bid out. So the reason why we don't have to bid this out is because this work is already bid out under the rules of Illinois bid law. So usually you would have to bid out this kind of work, but this work was already actually bid out. So we're kind of accessing that pricing, it's kind of like a venue of things, where we're reading this part, this part, this part, this part, and it adds up to a lot of money. So this is something that we really would like to look at getting the work done now because of the issues we're experiencing now, but also because of switching over to a cool shortly, within the next few months. So that's one, one part of this. The second part is, is different, but it's, it's related still to H vac in our chiller plants. Essentially what they've been working on is something to upgrade it. Essentially there's, you can talk a little bit more about what the upgrades actually are, but basically looking at to upgrade it because what, what they've kind of want, how they want to improve the chiller plant and the operation. And so essentially this, this part is what costs about twenty-four thousand, which is under the bidding threshold. And so this, the threshold for this would be fifty thousand, so we're well under that. So it doesn't require us to bid it at, at this point for this work, and this is a very particular type of work that we really need Train to do in the parts that, to, to get that to interface well. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Mark and talk about kind of some of the details about this work, but essentially that's kind of the background to what, what we understand with, with Lynn is the, the legal requirements of these contracts. Both of these things we would be able to cover under our existing budget for this year, so this is, this doesn't add to any of our, any of our budgeting at this point. So I'll turn that to Mark.
Okay. On the first project that Dan was referring to, repairs around the building, as we discovered with our, our new control system, a lot of the building had been put in more or less a manual mold. So when we put the new, our new building automation system in, we were trying to operate things that, because we realized there were parts that were broken around, around the building. So they went through and did an extensive evaluation of all the equipment and put together a list that, as Dan said, of all the parts and stuff that need to be replaced around the building so we can fix any of the problems we're having, controlling the temperatures in classrooms. You might have one classroom or two classrooms, right next to the five, third classroom, you're having issues because an actuator's not working or it's, it's, it's not closing all the way. There's, there's different things in this proposal that will cover all that so we can get everything. So when we send a command to the unit, the unit will actually do what it's supposed to do. The second proposal has to do with our chiller plant and the compressor system that runs the air conditioning. When we put our new controls in, the way we were running the system is, is more modern than, than it was with the old control system, which was over twenty years old. So we started experiencing pressure differentials and the equipment kept shutting down on us. So in order to solve that problem, so when the system starts up in the morning and we come in, it's actually operating and to bring the building to temperature in a timely fashion with the building the size that it is, the chiller's failing in the morning and our staff coming in seven o'clock in the morning and school starting at eighty-four-five, doesn't give us a turnaround time when we start the equipment at five A M. in the morning. So this is going to help us by changing these and installing these differential pressure switches. It's going to improve the, the function of the chiller units itself and it'll help it talk to the B A S system and so we, we know what's happening with it. And we can set, we can set the parameters so the equipment can operate properly. Any questions on two different projects?
Why are they not one project? I want to just make sure we're clear that it's two projects.
They are, well, it, it, they, sorry, I'm trying to.
Are they both, let me frankly back up, are they both covered under the pre-negotiated deal or is this twenty-four thousand dollar one not, that's a separate?
Pre-negotiated.
No, so the work, no, so the, the, the national contract pricing, that's the seventy-five, the twenty-four would not be covered under a national contract. And it truly, it's more honestly a coincidence that these happening, these are not connected, so the, the current upgrades that we're looking to is not because of the, the recent H vac issues we've been having at L H S. They're, they're similar, but they are distinct projects. I hope that answers your question. But regardless, seventy-five is covered under, because it's under the U S Communities, really it's the twenty-five that isn't covered under that contract, but it's below the threshold that we're not concerned. Say you even added it together and called it one project, which there really are two separate projects, you're talking a hundred and seventy-five of that is, is covered, but the other twenty-five is, is not really. So that, that probably another reason why they're separate projects, because they don't really fall into the same kind of categories essentially.
How is, how is the second, so the first one was just repairing a whole bunch of stuff. The second one is a, a form of upgrade and how is that different than the bid that we're going to vote on in the F and F portion of tonight that's also H V A C upgrades?
I'll let him speak more intelligently, but this here upgrades to the actual, the chiller plants, the HVAC upgrades are actually stuff that's happening inside the building.
So more distribution versus the actual chiller?
Yes, correct. These projects are working on equipment that we presently have and upgrading the operation of that equipment. The project that we will be speaking about in the FNF portion is adding additional cooling as we did the phase one last year on the second floor. We're going to be adding additional cooling in critical areas on the first floor. So when everybody enters the building in the morning, what we discovered, we did the second floor is, we're not conditioning the air, so we get the humidity and that coming in on the first floor is traveling to the second floor, causing condensation, dripping slippery floors, that type of situation. So we're addressing that as part of the HVAC project that we'll talk about with FNF.
So I guess we would recommend that we proceed with the work and really we don't need you to vote, and we can't vote tonight because it's not on the agenda anyway, but we would need a head nod or a thumbs up from you that we're okay to...
Really, I would say at the census, if you are truly objecting to this type of thing, then we will come back later with this, but unless you have objection, we would like that moving forward.
I have no objection.
You're good?
Great.
Kevin, we're good? Okay. Alright, great. Kathy, I can put the super manager's report.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, the consent vote agenda is listed, I believe it's items A through H. We reviewed that last week, so if I can ask for a motion to approve consent vote agenda, items A through H.
I motion to approve the consent vote agenda, items A through H.
Second.
Roll call please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye. Alright, motion carries. Alright, Facilities and Finance Committee, first item, bid recommendation for 2019 LHS summer upgrade HVAC upgrades. Back to you, Mr. Kupman. And Mr. Stanley.
See you all.
See you all, thank you.
Good job, guys.
Sorry, we got skipped through like fifty pages.
For the record, we didn't skip through. We didn't skip through.
No, 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 I meant, I just did my packet of...
Just for the record. Just for the record.
This is a lot more talking than I had planned on, sorry. So what I have for you is we have the bid information of the bid totals and the recommendation, but what I want to make sure that you see and have in front of you is the total cost of the project because it's really not just the one point nine billion that's in the bid award. There's also design fees that we would have to pay to, as Sarah's gone now, but to them, and which they paid to their subcontract, and then we're likely going to face some type of order costs. Last year when we did the HVAC upgrades for phase one, we ran into a few things where we had to spend, at this point about sixteen thousand dollars of district funds to resolve something that kind of came up that was really out of scope and unanticipated. So we're anticipating, we might have something, it's reasonable to assume there might be something like that. So really, for you to see the total cost of this project, we're sitting at about two point one million, not really the one point nine, that's really the all-in cost that we're looking at for this project.
Where is this money coming from?
This is part of the three million.
This is big money.
Yeah, this is part of the three million annual...
It's like all of it, it's most of the three million.
Correct. Yep, in touch also.
It was planned.
Yes. Do you want to go and talk about the, this is, sorry, this is one that we talked about at committee meeting last week that we had to delay because we wanted to make, again, we're facing a busy bid season. So this, the bid opening was delayed until Thursday.
Yes, Thursday.
It's that Thursday, so we got the bids open on Thursday, so like three business days ago. And we're able to kind of process and have some document for you on Friday. And so today, because I was out on Friday, been able to just kind of put together comprehensive cost for you guys to see.
So what were the actual bids? I'm shocked, the budget and the revised budget are identical, so that's the first time in history. What am I missing?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
So I'm looking at the budget for the trade number here. I'm assuming that means we had a million nine one nine five hundred budget.
So, yeah, this is just one, so I have a kind of a Google Doc of our projects, and so this is what I use when I'm tracking a project, like the costs and then if there are any revisions or changes, so say something comes back in and we have to do a change order to the project, that's where I would add in a change order, so, sorry, that's just my formatting. So really, you can just look at the first lines, I guess, just trying to give you a simple idea. That's all. So that middle, that second line really that you see, that's for changes that happen based on what we're anticipating in terms of...
So what was in our capital plan this year? Was it really two billion dollars?
Capital plan, three million. What, you mean for this project particularly? I do have to answer.
Originally, we changed scope a couple times. We were looking at about one point five million dollars for this summer's work, concentrating on hallways. We changed the scope and concentrated on different areas of entry into the building and then added scope for replacing units in, for instance, down in the industrial arts area where the units are in real bad shape. So we did, that would be alternate number two as part of this bid process. We did three different alternates. We also added in, as part of the LHS pool, we're going to have to do some abatement. And part of this project will cover, we will do abatement separately, but then it will cover new floors, new ceilings, new lighting in areas that are affected by the pool construction and some other classrooms in the building as our ongoing maintenance and asbestos removal as we work throughout the building. And we added an additional twenty, the upstairs classrooms that we did last year for HVAC upgrades, we added sprinklers and ceiling and light, sprinkler systems in those classrooms as well as new lighting and ceilings, so those rooms are totally complete.
Can I ask, let me ask a different variation of a question. Dan, what did we budget for CapEx for this year in total? How much, four million, five million?
You mean just as it pertains to like...
Total CapEx budget for this year?
About five million.
About five million. If we approve this, two million, will we stay within that budget of five million for the year?
Absolutely, yeah. So this is part of spending that.
Right, and how much more HVAC remediation or upgrades or whatever do we have to do at LHS?
We have a lot more to do throughout the building.
Alright, so we, I think we should, we should actually, you guys can figure out when to do this, but we should actually take a look at all of these LHS projects over the next couple of years and make sure we have visibility to what's going on there.
Yes, so we did incorporate that and took that into consideration in this project. As we changed the scope in the hallways, we looked at other equipment that we could readily change out. So there are two units, for instance, in the auditorium that are part of this bid. There are open closets on the second floor, one feeds the lower level changing area behind the stage down in the basement of the auditorium. And the second unit controls the hallways upstairs and downstairs, foyer areas. So that is all our equipment that needs to be replaced, so we were replacing that. We were replacing a unit down in the lower level of the studio theater. There's a unit there that's thirty years old, we were replacing that. We're replacing one rooftop air conditioning unit, don't remember the number right now, but that also is affected and that's up by the studio theater also.
That's all part of this?
That's all part of this, yes. So there's other HVAC equipment that we changed the scope in the hallway work and added the scope of starting to replace that obsolete equipment throughout the building where we can fit into the budget and into the scope we're working for the summer.
Okay, but I don't know what the rest of you guys think, but I mean, I think we should just review the long-range capital plan in LHS, really both high schools, but to start with LHS. I guess I didn't realize that we had a two million dollar project here and we've probably got a couple more of these coming in the next couple of years. I'm getting increasingly sensitive to these as we're building classrooms and pools and gyms and things like that.
And it would be helpful for context for newer board members, I'll only speak for myself, that I'm new to some of the ongoing maintenance work, the scope of that, and the longer-term plan, so it would be helpful on multiple levels.
We don't have to do it next month, but we could just pick a time sometime between now and the fall maybe, because I know we're going deep into budget season here pretty soon, but I don't know, I guess I just didn't realize the magnitude of this one.
You know, for the guys, this was covered last year when we went over the capital projects. You know, so we've done a phase one, this is phase two. And remember that LHS is an older building and a lot of that equipment, as Marcus talked about tonight, is thirty years old.
No, I get it.
It's not efficient, it doesn't work well. So, you know, we're kind of going through a replacement so we can certainly, you know, every year with the budget, we talk about the capital for next year, the CapEx, Kevin, for next year. But we could certainly talk about the long-range plan that we have and what we're cooking off every year off of that. But this is all part of that plan that we put together several years ago.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'd be happy to review that and update it, and we update it every year, so.
We may want to start even presenting this with, you know, in the context of that long-range plan too. So, I mean, I'm sure it's on there, but I don't remember what's on there personally. Now, one other question, is this going to have valves and everything that have to be replaced or has that already been taken into account?
This is, this is already taken into account. So if there is any equipment crossover, we will get a credit. We just had to verify because we hadn't...
But that...
...billings, so there are some units that we have to verify with the other project.
But that project that's doing the whole building to replace valves and actuators and all that good stuff?
On the equipment that needed it throughout the building. So we have over two hundred units around the building. So we've got to check back our scope in the areas, if any replaced, obviously, any equipment we are going to replace, we will not do the upgrades as part of this initial project for seventy-five thousand.
Okay. Okay, so what do you need tonight here? You need this...
Need your accepted bid recommendation.
So the one nine one, the one nine one nine five hundred, what's the low bidder?
Correct.
That's based with, that's based with alternate two and three?
Alternate two and three.
Alternative two and three.
Alright, so is there a motion to... And the bidder is FE Moran?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, if I could...
Yeah, go ahead.
...we, what was our... FE Moran was actually not the low initial bidder that we thought. The lowest initial bidder was Amber Mechanical. But they withdrew their bid because they made a mistake. As we looked at the numbers, we realized that their alternate number three was quite low. And so we questioned them on that because it was a couple hundred thousand dollars less. So they withdrew their bid, which made FE Moran the lowest responsible bidder.
So we only had two?
We had three bids.
But because of Amber's...
Because of Amber, I'm sorry, because of Amber's, yes.
Ready? I make a motion that we award the Libertyville High School Summer HVAC Upgrade Project to FE Moran Incorporated. This includes base bid plus alternates two and three for a total of one million nineteen nineteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Alright, any addition to discussion?
No, I can just say as a LHS parent, I remember my daughter walking out the door in a tank top with a down coat in her hand because depending on which classroom she was in, it was either going to be fryingly hot or freezing cold. So as we do this, I know LHS parents will appreciate it because kids get sick that way. I mean, when you're sitting in a freezing classroom one minute and, you know, a hot classroom the next, it's important for them to be able to focus and have a temper and environment. So as painful as it is to spend this money, we have to do it because of the aging of the structure, so.
And it's important to spend it as we go, so we don't end up ten years down the road with twenty-nine dollar bill that we can't afford, so. I understand, I just want to make sure we've got it all wired in our long-term plan. Okay, good job.
Alright, so we have a motion and second, any other discussion? Alright, roll call please.
Huber.
Hi.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Alright, next, bid recommendation of landscape and maintenance contract, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three.
Yep, this is what we talked in committee, this one we had in advance and were able to talk about. So we, a year ago, did a one-year renewal with our current provider, which is Landscape Concepts Management. And we said at that point that now we'll look at doing a multi-year bid, which is what we did, we're looking at doing it for five years. And the lowest bidder at that point is our current provider, Landscape Concept Maintenance. And so we have the bid tabulations in there for you. Essentially, the base bid is a, I can't remember the exact percentage, but it was around a seven percent increase for next year, but then, or a seven percent increase beyond the, for the twenty twenty year and then it goes, or, sorry, the seven percent increase beyond the current year and then it goes up, I think, three percent and then one point five percent every other year after that. So we've been very happy and very pleased with this result, really, especially relative to some of the other bids that came in at for this project. So we would recommend approving the five-year landscape maintenance contract with Landscape Concepts Management.
I'd be curious what mill-year design was going to do with Brainerd for fifty-three thousand dollars here.
Good thing we'll not find out.
Yeah. Okay, is there a motion to accept the bid from Landscape Concepts for one hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars?
I move to accept the bid from Landscape Maintenance Contract for, what was that one?
One twenty-three five sixty-six.
One hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Second.
Discussion. Alright, roll call please.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber. Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Last but not least, disposal request, there is one, I believe one item on the list, is that correct?
No, it's all of them.
So this is, so usually we'll give a request and we bring it to committee and then we, it'll be on consent agenda, like you and the water bowl goals was on consent agenda. So this came in after our FNF meeting, so this is Mick's...
This one is I.
Yeah, a lot of things, and if you get a chance to read it, it's a really cool, really cool program they do.
Okay, history.
Yeah, there's a lot, yeah, there's a lot there. So it's very cool, I don't, does he do this twice a year? I can't remember exactly how often he does this, but they explain it to you.
For the public, you want to explain what we do with the equipment?
Yeah, I'm probably not going to be super intelligible in being able to explain it. But in general, they donated essentially to this company that is involved with challenge, I think physically challenged adults and it provides work opportunities for them and they're able to work with these, break them down and use them, so it...
It's going straight in.
Yeah, sorry, I can't really do a better articulate job. Mick would be able to go on forever, it's really exciting, he loves this.
It's worth looking at, I did when we first discussed it early on in my tenure. But the name of the company is called Recycling Avenue, avenues to independence. And if anybody's interested, they can look at recyclingavenue.com for more information about what they do with the equipment we donate.
Cool organization. And I will tell you, some of this equipment is much older than our students.
But going forward, more and more of the Chromebooks are actually going to be owned by the kids, right?
Owned.
Yeah. These Chromebooks are part of our original rollout, it looks like.
Yeah, they were with Samsung.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the list of equipment to be disposed of?
So who'd?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Program personnel, Sheriff person, Batson.
Okay, back to my agenda here. We have first up the District one twenty-eight reciprocal reporting agreements. We went over these in committee last week. There's two agreements, one for the Village of Libertyville and one for the Village of Vernon Hills. Is, do we have to do these separate?
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Uh, we have one more item, employment of employees, and seems like a, a list of a number of different positions.
These all came in after, you know, P and P last week, things are constantly, obviously changing, but we want to be able to get these approved, um, at this board meeting.
For those of you that are relatively new on the board at the beginning of the season and see the end, this end of the year sprint, there's still piles up here between now and then.
Okay, uh, can we have a motion, please?
I move to accept the annual employment recommendations for the list they have before us, continuing employment, first, second, third, and fourth non-tenure faculty, honorable dismissal of non-tenure full-time faculty, honorable dismissal of tenure full-time faculty, non-renewal of non-tenure part-time faculty as listed in the discussion committee. Second.
Okay, any further questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have a question, how many students, just pretty much most, every student that enrolls, you know, decides the classes, gets the classes, or is there a percentage of, it's like, sorry, that was full, how's that work? So there are some, when, um, for the most part, if you look at the big classes that are offered quite a bit, you know, they usually get those, and some of, you know, the other classes, the electives, depending on the number of students that request those courses, um, sometimes sectioning wise, they may get offered only in the fall or only in the spring, or it doesn't fit in their schedule, um, so there is a small percentage of our students. We try our best, um, to, you know, incorporate, so what happens, and if somebody is looking for a certain, say, art class, um, that they want, their schedule is kind of built off of that one class when it's offered, and it's only offered a couple of times, so, you know, their geometry, we're offering nine sections, you know, a day, so there's room in their schedule to move those, so it's sometimes when they, depending on the classes, they may not get it, but we try our best to make sure. Is there like a priority, like according to what class you're in, you know, seniors get first dibs?
No, not really, no.
I don't think anyone really just denied a class.
No, we'll take, we'll take all the student course requests that they've, that they've had, uh, the only classes right now would be if a class is closed, if it's not running and they made a choice to run a class, or to try and enroll in a class that's not running, we'll take those students and get them a new class that we know is gonna run, or at least offer them if it's an elective to make another choice. Once that's there, every student's schedule is loaded basically into the computer, into a matrix, and then the computer spits out the first best way to organize the entire school schedule and load the most people into classes, um, so we're then trying to match at that point what the, our teacher staffings are to what the courses, the best way that the courses are coming out that also match the highest load for each of, you know, from all the student requests. Every time we move something, it affects two, it can affect two things, it can affect the number of students that are in that class, especially if it's a singleton class, um, as well as the teaching assignments for the teachers, what, what periods are they available, what periods are they not available, so, uh, we use our large mainstream classes, think like in Algebra I and Algebra II, as the vessels to really move the kids around to try to get them into the singleton classes that they're hoping to get into, so we're gonna be doing that, Andy Young and, and Ole Stevens at the building will basically start on that now or right after spring break and continue through into August, uh, try to balance and get the kids into, into classes.
So a lot of it's done by the computer, but at the same time, there's still a lot of human pieces.
A lot of hand, hand schedules.
You know, to make sure that, you know, A, you know, our students get all the schedules they want, but it also, you know, works with the teacher's schedule that they have a lunch period and so forth. It's also important to have a little bit of flexibility, class size, something.
Yes, yeah, correct.
Here's another, another point that we've talked about relative to even the additions that you all have just approved, is let's say the computer model spits out, um, an AP Biology Best Fits second hour, the fewest number of irresolables happens second hour, but we don't have any classrooms, science classrooms available second hour, then we have to force a class, maybe not AP Bio, but maybe we have to take one of the regular Bios and move it to, you know, to fifth hour when there is a room available, um, but that creates four more irresolables that we wouldn't have had had we, so that, that, that little trickle-down of space, and for us, science is the prime example, next year, because science is up now, Brian just talked about the increase in enrollment, not a ton, but if we have two more sections in science, we almost don't have any space in science labs left, so it's, it's really, you start to ignore what's best for kids based on the model that's projected and just try to fit stuff into classrooms and then deal with the irresolables afterwards.
And I'll say from someone in, so sitting in that process and right clearly, that this is not my, my thing really to do this, but I, but I do really like numbers, and I, one thing I didn't tell any of them, I was trying to figure, like, they just see the numbers and they, they see them, I need to figure out a way to see the numbers, and I was actually looking at the number of percentage of kids based on the number of quests or how many they could accommodate, I was astounded at how many 100%s I saw, meaning the vast majority of the sections that I saw were, at least on, on, almost being the one, the staffing idea was able to accommodate the requests, like, it didn't happen, but I was, I was surprised at how often it did happen, it truly was, I was very impressed.
How often 100% of the requests were satisfied?
Yeah, and staying within reasonable numbers, yeah.
Alright, well, great job, that's a lot of hard work as well, I know that's every year a lot of work for you guys.
I'll just underscore, it's really important work because 70% of the cost of the district is staff, because we're a service organization, so the work that we do in staffing really derives the majority of the cost of the district, so, uh, team does a great job, um, every year on this, and it is a very involved process, but thanks to all of you, great job.
Okay, we've had a, uh, motion and a second, can, any further discussion? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Hassel.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Bunstad.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.